All right, good evening. We'll start the meeting. Call the meeting to order. As usual, per our standard operating procedure, I'll read the opening statement, how we're going to proceed with the hearing this evening of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And good evening. This is the regularly scheduled June 9th meeting of the Geneva Planning and Zoning Commission. I am Scott Stocking, Chairman of the Commission. Tonight, for the benefit of those in the audience, I'm joined by City Planner Jayden True. All Commissioners are present in here at City Hall, except Michael Slifka, who is not attending the meeting. Virtual attendees may watch or participate the live stream meeting by accessing the link provided in the meeting agenda found on the city's website at www.geneva-il.us. For more information about meeting procedures or providing public comment, please see notice regarding meeting and public comment rule modification, a link to which is provided on the agenda for the meeting this evening. This evening, the Commission will host a public hearing regarding Agenda Item 5A. As the Chairman of tonight's meeting, I will guide the public applicant and Commission through the public hearing process, which is outlined in the back of the meeting agenda. Please see this page for further details. The Commission will open the public hearing, and the applicant will provide an opening statement and a brief overview of their request. The Commission members will first have the opportunity to ask questions and make comments. This will be followed by the public comment and testimony regarding the request. Audience members will be called on virtually or in person and be given an opportunity to comment. We ask that you state your name, address, when it is your turn to speak. If your comment has already been made, or your question has already been asked, it is not necessary to repeat it. Remind members of the public to refrain from varying off-topic and direct comments that are relevant to the requests being considered. Following the end of public testimony, the applicant will have an opportunity to provide a closing statement and comprehensively answer questions or respond to any of the comments made from members of the public. Additional questions or comments may be stated by the Commission, but the public comment will not be reopened. The public hearing may then be closed, followed by the Commission deliberation on separate requests. Any person speaking during the public hearing agree to understand that anything they say will be considered sworn testimony and affirmed to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Commissioners, please state your name prior to speaking and prior to providing a roll call vault to better assist our record keepers, for example, Stocking, I, A, or N. Okay? So that's how we're going to proceed this evening. Jayden, I'm going to swear people into it right now. Can I do that?
Yeah, let's do it.
Okay, so folks that are going to give testimony, please rise. Do you, do you, do you, do you please state that our testimony-
Mike Canuth, 57 Briar Cliff, Montgomery, Illinois.
Okay. That, do you solemnly swear to testimony or to give it will be the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, Mamie Seaton. All right, given that, Jayden, please call them.
Mead.
Here.
Mataskil.
Mataskil, here.
Stocking.
Stocking, here.
Holloman.
Holloman, here.
Evans.
Evans, here.
Lorin.
Lorin, here.
We have a quorum.
All right, thank you. Next is the approval of the agenda for this evening's meeting.
Move to approve. Evans.
Moved and seconded by Rebecca. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next item is approval of the minutes of the April 28th, 2022 meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I have one suggested change.
Okay.
On page three of the minutes in the fourth paragraph, second line, it says, "By sending the application as a permitted use versus a permitted use." I think that was intended to say, "By sending the application as a special use versus a permitted use."
I believe so.
So if you change the word permitted in the second line to special, I think it would reflect what Commissioner Evans said that evening.
Anyone else have any, agree with that? No objection? Okay, we'll change it. All right, do I have a motion? Are there any other additional changes?
Move to approve as amended.
Mataskil, second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So we'll move on to our public hearing agenda. It's one, single one, 5A. It's a sign variance. It's a request for sign variation of Section 11-12-6 to increase the maximum allowable sign area upon the West State Street facade from 20 to 55.23 square feet. Location is 302 West State Street, and the applicant is Michael Canuth, on behalf of Even Flow Music and Spirits LLC. Jayden, you have items on the record?
Yes, I do. So, an application for a sign variation filed by Michael Canuth of Even Flow Music and Spirits LLC dated March 24th, 2022, including the following items. Project narrative, response to sign variation standards, legal description, location and sign designs, ownership authorization, list of property owners within 500 feet of the subject property, affidavit attesting to the accuracy of the list of property owners within 500 feet of the subject property. The contents of this file also includes a copy of the letter to all property owners within 500 feet, providing notice of the application being filed, a certification of publication from the Daily Herald for the legal notice that was published on May 25th, 2022, for tonight's public hearing, a copy of the public hearing notice mailed to all property owners within 500 feet, and a staff report from the Community Development Department to the Planning and Zoning Commission dated June 9th, 2022.
All right. Thank you very much, and we'll hear from the applicant.
Hi, once again, Mike Canuth, 57 Briar Cliff, Montgomery, Illinois. I'm proud to say that Even Flow is going on its 11th birthday this year, and thank God, we actually just booked another wedding. We haven't had a wedding since COVID, so things are finally starting to come up, knock on wood. I really thank you guys for your time. So this whole thing started real quick, let me explain what happened. What happened was, is at this time, the particular time, my owner got transferred. I don't know if you guys know the history real quick, but the building actually went under a sheriff's sale because the old owner, the past owner, he wasn't paying taxes on it, so it went to a sheriff's sale. And then another gentleman from the Duquesne Corporation, he bought it, and when he bought it, he did some improvements on it, okay? And he got a contractor, and the contractor came in and got a permit for everything. Well, at the same time, we were going to, the sign outside, so if you guys understand, the sign used to be an awning, like a 3D ID awning, if you guys remember, 302 West Days, okay? So the awning was coming out. The problem was, is that we get a wind tunnel going through there on 38, especially when semis go by, and it was not only ripping the awning completely off, and it'd secure the awning, but the actual steel itself was rusting at the bolts, okay? So myself and my graphic designer and the contractor, we came together, and the problem was this, though. The problem was, is that we couldn't, because of the historical department, just so you guys know, the building, the outside of the building is part of the historical Geneva Historical Society, so we're not allowed to put anything else outside. We're not allowed to drill any more holes or add anything to the outside, and even if my owner wanted to replace the windows, but we've had issues just replacing the windows because they're historic windows, you know? So, so when, what happened was, is they designed the sign to go exactly in the same anchor brackets that the old awning was in. So when they took off the old awning, they didn't have to, they designed it purposely to satisfy the historical society. Well, when they were doing the permits, the design guy thought, the design guy thought that the general contractor was going to do the permit for it, and the general contractor guy thought the sign guy had to do the permit for it. So it was just kind of a mix of the two sides. But we took care of all that, we took care of every that. But when we put the sign up there, we just, like I said, we went from a 3D sign to a 2D sign, and I think you guys have all seen it, right? The other sign out there? We went from, we had to use the same brackets, and we also wanted to make it a steel that wasn't going to rust and also wasn't going to get affected by it. So we made the whole thing out of aluminum, so therefore it would last forever and not get affected by the wind, okay? Well, we wanted to follow all the rules the best we could, but I guess we were just a little bit over the maximum of that building for the signage permit, and I'm requesting, please, if we can, for this particular situation, because I can't really change any of the anchors on the building, so shrinking the sign would make it look really awkward. You'd actually see the anchors. The sign wouldn't cover up the anchors. It wouldn't cover up the holes, you know what I mean? So that was the whole reason he designed it that way. So I'm asking, please, if we can, if it's allowed for us to keep the sign that's in there right now, it's perfectly safe, it's aluminum, it's, it looks cool, I think it looked great, and it actually does, one other thing that's really nice, is the awning covered up, the old 302, the 302 address on the glass, well, taking that awning away, you can actually see the 302 glass address. So I think that actually makes the building look prettier.
Any questions for the applicant? John?
It was unclear. You referred to the Historic Preservation Committee. It sounds like you approached them and you got feedback from them.
John, your mic, please.
Close answer. I'm sorry. So it was unclear to me. It sounded like you had some interaction with the Historic Preservation Committee. I didn't see any of that evidence or minutes. Normally, we would see that in here, that they told you that you had to use the same anchors, so you couldn't do a smaller sign because you couldn't penetrate the building.
John, 100%. So what happened was, when I put the original sign on the corner, like the corner sign, I got, we got into a serious conversation about that because I was limited to what I could do for the corner sign, because I had to use the same anchors that the gentleman who had, if you remember the sales guy, he had a gigantic billboard up there that said for sale or rent. I had to use those holes, so that was like one of the big deals. So I learned that 11 years ago when I put the corner sign up. So I didn't, I already knew the rules, I already knew the rules. So like, I didn't, that's why I didn't like go and talk to him again, because I knew that we had to follow the exact same anchor holes. We couldn't drill anything new into the siding, or I'd have to go in front of the history, you know, and ask them if I could. So I just, we just, we just thought it would be easier to use the same anchor holes, so.
I mean, Jayden, can you provide some additional clarification on that? Because the item number two for the conditions, for, I kind of read it, but it wasn't quite clear whether the Historic Preservation Planner has administrative rights to rule on this, or whether the Commission, the actual historic Commission, has to see it.
So the Historic Preservation Commission does not review signs. That's something that is done administratively with our preservation planner, Michael Lambert. So the application would have come to the building division, it would have been reviewed by Michael, and I believe when the sign was first noticed, it was not in compliance, and that was noted. But I think at that point-
Can you clarify that? When the sign was first noticed, after it had been installed?
Yeah, so-
So Michael had never seen it.
Yes, and then we had them apply for a permit, to my knowledge, we had them apply for a permit-
Right.
And it was already over, and that's when it was stated that this was exceeded the maximum amount of square footage that signs could have on that facade.
Did you get any feedback from Mr. Lambert as to whether or not the sign could have been smaller on new anchors in the grout lines or mortar lines of some of the stone?
Yes, so they, a new sign could have, a smaller sign could be installed on the facade of the building. There's nothing that the Historic Preservation Commission or Michael can, they don't have the authority to actually deny it to be put on the facade, as long as it meets that square footage, and, I mean, they could put anchors anywhere on the facade of the building to put a new sign up.
So they can make modifications to the building to install the sign-
Yes.
And they don't have any-
That's not what I was educated on my first install of the sign, but if that's changed, that's changed, that was 11 years ago.
Excuse me, I just wanted to get that clarification. I hadn't, so, so basically, they, they can install a sign and, in any way, shape or form in the building, and Historic Preservation does not rule on that. Michael just basically looks at it and says it doesn't violate what, in terms of his admin.
Yes, so I don't, I don't know the exact title of the guidelines, but there are city council adopting guidelines that state that we prefer to have the anchors put in the mortar versus brick.
Sure, in the stone, right.
So just for building integrity purposes, just to keep that?
Yes, so, yes, exactly. So that is what is encouraged, it's not required. So if, if the applicant were to come in and say, "Okay, we're going to put in a smaller sign, we're going to put the anchors at these locations, if it meets the square footage, then Michael could review that, and if it met the requirements, it would be approved."
Okay.
We have an awning, or you have an awning on Third Street, which is not subject to the same wind tunnel effect, as you say.
Right.
But at some point, that could degrade to, canvas degrades over time, and the steel framing could, could, could rust and deteriorate. So you could be looking to do the same thing on that side, right? And then if you extrapolate what you did here, you'd be looking to do the same anchor locations, and you'd end up with even more noncompliance, right?
I would definitely, now that I know this, I would definitely, we'd come up with a, we'd have the discussion and find out before we, before we install it, before we install it and get this far already, I would definitely make sure that everybody's happy and that, you know, I just, I want to make everybody happy, but at the same point, I don't, what I don't want to do is, just so you understand too, is if we do shrink the sign down, then we're going to be showing off the old fashioned, you're going to see the, the old anchors and the old box, the old steel plates that are, I'm covering up the ugliness right now with my sign, do you know what I mean? And if we shrink the sign down, you're going to see the old, where the, where the, where the old awning was, and it's, it's obvious. I mean, it looks obvious, you know?
So, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
So who fabricated the sign and installed it?
So who fabricated? His name, well, his name is Thomas, but he works for a graphic design company, Gotham Design, but the general contractors, ever since COVID, is no longer a general contractor anymore. I think he moved out of state.
So, the person who fabricated the sign, is it a sign company? They must have gotten the sign from somewhere.
Yeah, yeah, he built it, he's a graphic design guy, so he does signs, ooh, I'm sorry.
So he, and he is a person who has a business?
Yeah.
And so he's a commercial-
Yeah, he does, he's, he's done a couple other signs downtown, too.
Okay, yeah, so I guess I'm, I'm just trying to figure out how two separate professional contractors, like, didn't put in an application, didn't recommend that you go to the Historic District.
So, okay, so this, it was the perfect storm. So what happened was, the graphic design guy doesn't install the sign, the contractor does, okay? The graphic design guy thought that the contractor did the permit, the contractor thought that the graphic design guy, that Thomas got the permit, and so when he delivered the sign, John, contractor, what was his last name? This goes back to before COVID, so I don't have a brain anymore, can't remember his last name. But he, the sign got delivered and he installed it, and then that's when we, that's when I, that's when this whole thing happened, because I thought it was our take care, because, because he did all the permits for inside, so all the permits were done for inside. So like, all the construction that was done inside, like the deck that was built, the stairs were redone, he did the permit for that, he did all that done. And so the second, the second he found out that the permit wasn't done for the sign, he went down to the city right there, because he was already, he was already qualified for the city to be a contractor, he immediately, excuse me, excuse me, he immediately went and got a permit, immediately.
And when, when was that?
The, the day, probably the day we hung the sign, when they saw I was hanging the sign. Like, so, like, because the inspector came, well, this is what happened, the inspector came out to inspect the load ratio on the deck that they installed, and he's like, "What's this?" And he's like, "Well, it's a sign." And then that guy's like, "Well, I don't know about this," and that's when he went in and got a permit for it right away.
Okay, so at that time, though, it should have been a red flag to someone that, that the sign was not the right size.
Yeah, it really, he put the permit in, he put the sign up, and then we've been having this, this discussion for a long time, whether or not, because like, once again, it's how you determine it. Like, the inspector determines that, like, the awning and the sign is the exact same size, but the awning's 3D, and the sign itself is 2D, right? So he's adding the, he's adding the 2D, he's taken that 45 away off of it completely and adding, that's not part of the sign at all, you know, and he's adding footage to the sign, which is, once again, where I would like to find out the clarification of that, because, like, the awning and the sign are the exact same size, except for one's 3D and one's 2D, you know what I mean? So like, that's, like, kind of wondering how it got bigger, you know, it's actually, it's actually smaller, but that's kind of the confusion on my side, too, but that's, that's neither here nor there. What I'm asking from you guys right now is, the sign looks really great, and it does cover up the holes that are in the building right now. If I do shrink the sign down, it's, it's going to make the soffit look, it's going to make the fascia look a lot worse than it does right now on the building.
But it's, it sounds like, from what Jayden was saying, and maybe, maybe I'm misunderstanding what you were just saying about the preservation, historical preservation, that you are able to drill into different holes, is that what you-
That's correct.
Okay, so in-
And I didn't know that.
Not getting that clarification.
I did not know that, no, I'm so sorry. I, we went over this 11 years ago, or 12 and a half, 11 and a half years ago when I put the corner sign up. I did all the right paperwork that we're talking about right now, and we had to change the, the way that it was arranged and the size of it because of the anchors, and that's, and, now, I didn't know that, though. I didn't, Jayden, I didn't know that, I didn't know that, that you guys can overrule the Historic Society. At the time, I was told that we could not do that. So then I didn't have another conversation with them again when we put the new one up, because I already had the conversation like six years before that, or seven, seven years before that. So I apologize for that, I should have had the conversation, I should have, I should have asked Historic Society what our options are here, but I was just following the same rules they gave me when I put the corner sign up.
So who put up the awning?
Who put up the awning?
Yeah.
The people before, the person who owned the building before. I would probably say 302 did.
And it's got, but it's got your-
Oh, I, the awning, the actual awning itself, the awning-
Yeah, yeah.
-used to be another name, and it was white, I think it was, back in the day.
No, this right here, this black awning-
Yeah, that, yeah, that's, that's a fabric, the steel bracket that it was on, that, I just replaced the fabric. The bracket was still there, so I just replaced the fabric. That's all I did.
Okay, so that was what, 11 years ago, you said?
Yeah, I think it was 302, or what was the name of-
That seems like a pretty good amount of time for an awning, to me.
In this climate.
Yeah, in this climate, with, like you're saying, with that-
Well, and it's, I mean, the-
Front-facing.
The canvas on that awning, the canvas on the awning is heavy-duty exterior, God say, canvas is very expensive, but the problem is, is that we, over time, you can't, you can't beat a semi going 60 by that, you just can't, the wind tunnel. And I know, you guys know, you've probably been down the street, you get, you get a good wind tunnel on that, you know? So the decision was made, and, and I thought my contractors took care of it, and then now we're, now we're here, so, and I'm asking for, please, it's, I think it looks great, but then again.
Tim?
Did you ever receive a permit to put the sign up?
Yes.
You did?
Yes.
So then my question is, why was he given a permit if it was not going to be a permitted sign?
Okay, that's a good question. And the answer to that question is, the answer to that question is, is that the contractor realized that the general contractor, the design guy that designed it, that built it in his shop, because the guy that built it in his shop doesn't install it. The contractor realized that he didn't have a permit for it, because the inspector was inspecting inside, so then he ran over and filled out a permit, okay? And when he filled out the permit, it got, it got approved, because he was doing work inside, he got approved of it. But then, what happened was, is that either somebody did some research, or something happened, and they came back out and they, they measured it, and I guess either the, the measurement was from the, they, the contractor did the measurement from the, if you look at the sign itself, it has a border on it, okay? And then inside the border is the actual words, and then there's another, like, two inches outside or three inches outside the border. He was counting the actual, just sign. He wasn't counting the whole, he wasn't counting the, like, like, the rest of it, he was just counting the square that was, does that make sense to you?
Yeah, that's, doesn't seem like it would be 15 square feet, though.
I know, it's, I don't know why, I don't know where they're getting-
Turn over.
I don't, I don't know where, I really don't know where they get the numbers, and I don't want to, I don't want to make anybody mad, whoops, whoops. I don't want to, I don't want to make anybody mad or anything like that, I don't know where they get the nominal measurements.
I just, I don't, I don't understand why a permit was granted if it didn't comply, because the permit was wrong. Is that what you're saying?
No.
The measurement-
One at a time, please.
The permit, to my knowledge, was not approved, and I have an email here from Michael Lambert into, from 2019, July 23rd, 2019, and it states, "The submitted permit application for the recently installed sign on State Street facade," give me one moment.
Not approved.
"...is not approved for the following reasons. One, the total allowable sign area per the building facade, 40 square foot maximum, is exceeded. Per the City of Geneva Sign Code, no more than two imaginary rectangles can be utilized to calculate the total sign area. No information has been provided for the street frontage or existing signage. Based on the dimensions of the building facade available through the Kane County Recorder's office and dimensions of the file of the existing corner signage, I have calculated the following. The existing sign area on State Street is 24.01 square feet. The newly installed sign area on State Street is 27.74 square feet. The total sign area on State Street is 51.75 square feet, which is in excess of the maximum allowable sign area. That calculation is different from the staff report. The staff report has the correct calculation, the sign calculation. Please remove the existing sign and submit an application for a new sign that is compliant. It cannot exceed 15.99 square feet." I did not realize this was- Let me flip that.
So I'm unclear, you say that your contractor went to the city and got a permit and brought it back, and you're telling me that no permit was ever granted? Somebody's got this story wrong.
Yeah, my, my contractor, he went, that, that day when, when the inspector noticed it, and he went and filled out the permit, and then, when he, when he gave, when he gave the CO for the job, he, I mean-
He filled out the information, but did he come back with a permit?
I haven't, to be honest with you, I got to be completely-
All right, so you don't know that a permit was ever granted?
I don't, I don't know. He, he told me he did, he told me he did, he told me that day he went and got the permit. He got a permit, he did, he did everything, paid for it, and, and that was, that was that, I did not know. He, like I said, he was dealing with the inspectors, he was taking care of the job, and he, he had, he had a lot of work inside as well, too, he had a lot of-
I get that. So wouldn't the inspector have wanted to see the permit? I mean, he says that the contractor just said, told me he took care of the permit, wouldn't the inspector have wanted to see that permit, had been granted?
Yeah, I think they came back and there wasn't, there was no permit.
So it appears that the permit was not granted, maybe it was applied for.
Yeah, it was, like I said, it was so long ago, and my contractor at the time, he was doing multiple jobs, and I, if you were to ask me right now if it was approved, I would say yes, because he got everything else approved. He got everything else signed off, he got a CO on the building, and he got everything else done, so.
But you never saw a permit?
I, no, no.
And not in your records, like, in your files?
Not in my files, I would, I would have to find him, I'd have to actually find him, and, because he, he handled all that, he was a subcontractor. And the thing was, he wasn't my subcontractor, he was the owner, excuse me, he was the owner of the building subcontractor. You get what I'm saying? Yeah, so, so like, I didn't really communicate that much with him as much as the owner did.
Tim, did you have something?
I think what we're all trying to come to grips with are two issues. I think we've concluded there was no permit.
There's any saying it wasn't, so I'm going to believe the city.
It appears the applicant relied on a contractor who may have applied for a permit, but there's no conclusive evidence that it was ever issued. In fact, the only evidence we have right here is that it was denied.
Not approved.
Yes, denied. And then the second issue is, leaving all that aside, we have a sign that does not comply with the current zoning and an application for a variation of that.
This is an interesting question, because of the amount of time that has already passed since this was first, became an issue, is there a reason that this is something he would have to bring into compliance within a certain period of time, or can he have, you know, whatever, you know, some discussion of what would be a reasonable time period?
I, from a staff perspective, I believe that the, that the Community Development Department has been lenient thus far, given, I mean, this has been happening since, I mean, it's, it's been brought to the attention of the parties involved since 2019. it's been brought to the attention of the parties involved since 2019. And I think we would be willing, if there's progress being made, I think that's ultimately what we want to see, is progress being made towards taking the sign down and replacing it, or whatever it might be. But we, we just have to see progress. We need to see action being taken. And we don't want to be here again in, you know, an extended period of time.
And you did say that the only reason this came forward for a variance was because there was a threat of adjudication. It got to that point.
So that was taking place. I don't know if that was the sole reason.
Okay.
But that was happening. I was working closely with Michael and Lupe on getting the application and the materials together. And we got there. But-
But yeah, I mean, this is one, this is one level of relief that they can get. And so until the city decides this, then they can't move to the next step. So they took, they did the right thing. They came to us and tried to get relief. So that's, that's the way to go about it.
Lupe, we were talking about Lupe, Lupe's my GM, and she works very, very hard. And she's been working very hard at this, too. And we, we want, we, we want to work with you guys. We want to make sure we're trying to help with compliance and everything like that, very much. It's just, unfortunately, we are in a situation right now. By removing the sign, it'll, it'll make the, if I remove the sign off, it'll just look kind of weird, you know? It'll just look like 302 West again, without anything there. And by the time I can raise the money, the capital, to buy a new one, because those, unfortunately, those signs are not cheap, unfortunately. I don't know my timeframe would be, to be honest with you. So.
Yes, Rebecca?
So I guess this is also a question for Chayton. Was there a provision made, like, you can keep the sign up while we're kind of going through this process? I'm wondering why the sign didn't come down in 2019.
Exactly. Exactly.
So yeah, typically, like, and I guess another example would be the St. Mark's Church. Like, they, they covered it up. But if, if there is an application filed, then we will go through that process before moving further on adjudication.
But I mean, as far as, like, from 2019, when, when that email was sent that said that the sign is not in compliance, and now it's been up for three years, how did that, like, why did you keep it up? Why did, why was it allowed to stay up?
When, when the email, when you guys, we saw the email, we, I probably found out about it probably a couple of months after that, because that's, because it came out. Like, I didn't know. I, I wasn't part of the circle, you know? And then, and then I, then I found out about it. And that's when I met with the inspector, and we walked the street, and we talked about, you know, how we measure signs, and how it works, and things like that. And then that, then, then we met again, and actually met with, with the Mr. Burns, Mayor, Mayor Burns come out, just to walk with us, just to talk, you know? And that's why, and then, and then next thing you know, it was, it was March, you know?
Yeah, but 2020 to 2022, that's two years.
But that's all COVID, though.
The world did not, I mean-
Yeah. I mean, yeah, we, well-
I understand COVID.
When we got, when I finally got, when we finally opened back up, and got the email, and got everything going, that was when Chatham and I, we'd been, we'd been talking since then, pretty much. I mean, it's been, I mean, we've been, it took us a while to get all the letters together, and get everybody to get all the addresses for all the people.
So it was, it was just, just keep it up until we figure it out? Was that?
No. I, I-
Okay. That's what I'm trying to get to, like-
No, I mean, it was, it was, it was keep it up. And what I was educated is that come in here, ask for a variance, you know, pay the money, figure out what it takes to, to get the variance, and see, see how we can do that. And that's, that's where we're at right now. I'm hoping that, that, and here's the other thing. I don't want this to turn into a can of worms, where everybody else is, it's like, wow, wow, west, left and right here. We could just put up stuff without permits, you're gonna do that. That wasn't the intention. Like I said, he applied for the permit the day he found out that there wasn't a permit for it. We obviously would have, I put, I applied for the permit for the corner sign. Why would I not do it for this one? You know what I mean? Like, obviously, you know, I mean, duh. But I mean, like, we thought we did. We've had all the other permits for everything else done. It just slipped through the, slipped through the cracks. And then that's, and that's, and I, and I, once again, I apologize for that. It was just too many, too many, too many people involved at the time.
Anything else from the commissioners?
No.
Okay.
I, I don't, I have a question. I, I still don't think Rebecca's question has really been answered. Chayton, why was this allowed to stay up for so many years?
There had been communication, to my knowledge, this is, this is the extent that I understand. There has been communication with the owner, with, with Michael, on the violation. And I think, was a variation process started before this?
Yeah. So what happened was, is we were gonna go variation before COVID, okay? All right? And we, I got the information together, and we were gathering the, the stuff that we needed to give. It wasn't you at the time. I don't know who, who-
Probably Paul Evans.
Paul. Yeah, Paul. Thank you. That, 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 that sounds, that sounds familiar. And we were, we were going through the process, and then it just, you know, it got up there.
I, I think it was a combination of the city attempting to work with the applicant, but also, this is coming, this is coming, red crumbs, piece by piece. And the timeline was extended out to apparently-
Bless you.
-three years. That's, that's my understanding of the situation.
It, it sounds like there wasn't a definitive, you must take the sign down. It was, let's work together and get, move this forward for a variance. And the decision wasn't made to call for the sign coming down, because there was some progress, albeit slow, that-
And then when there was no progress, that's when a notice would go out, another notice would go out.
Okay.
Another notice, adjudication is coming.
And again, just complication of COVID. So like, they're gonna remain business. So it's sort of like, it's just a combination of things.
Right.
But, so, yeah.
If I could turn back the clock, I would definitely make the sign smaller.
I mean, it's just an unfortunate situation. But the bottom line is that you violated the ordinance, and you, we can't make it whole. So, I mean, you're in violation of the zoning ordinance. And this, so, I mean, if there was some ruling that we could get to show hardship, which I don't see in this case.
Well, once again-
The fact that you didn't know what you were doing when you installed the sign is not hardship.
Yeah, I know. No, you're, you're, I'm not, I'm not taking that at all. I'm not taking it at all. What I didn't, this is what I didn't know, though. This is my, once again, it wasn't that I didn't, it wasn't that I was doing something that I thought was wrong or bad.
No, I'm not saying that.
No, I know. I'm just saying that, like, when we took a 3D model to a 2D model, I didn't understand that the inspector was gonna then change the size of the sign. I didn't know that. I, I was clear. I would, everybody that we talked to was like, we just, this is, this is the same anchors that it went in. We just shrink it down to a 2D model. And then that's why when we walked the street, and we walked up down the street, like, you pointed with the laser, Chayton?
Mm-hmm.
You pointed with the laser. There was a lot of other, my neighbors up and down the street, where if we pointed with the laser, that, you know, there's questions.
The details of it, I mean, the fact is that you're in significant violation of the zoning ordinance.
Right.
Not a couple feet.
Right. Right.
You're in significant violation of the ordinance.
Right.
Okay. So is there any other, um-
And, Barrett, it's important, we are a recommending body. The city council will take our recommendation, and they make a final decision.
Okay.
But I mean, we're kind of in a spot here. So if there are any other questions to the commission, I'm gonna ask if there's any public comment, because I'm, there might be somebody online that, sir, are you here to comment on this item? Okay, so there isn't anyone. I just, I, I think you're, we'll give you another chance to talk, but I want to make sure there's, if there's anybody on public here, that we actually get public comment. So folks that are online, if there is anyone online-
There's not.
There isn't anybody online, so I don't even have to ask the question. Okay. So there's no one online for public comment? So-
I, I just wanna say-
There aren't gonna be a public comment on this one?
I just want to say thank you guys for hearing me out. I mean, I, like I said, it's, it's not the perfect situation. And my, unfortunately, we've been affected very, very hard by this. So if, if you guys can just, if, if we have to remove the sign and put up another one, if we have to, if that comes to time, if we can give me some time to, to raise some capital, get a loan to, to, to buy a new sign, I don't know if that's a month, two months, whatever, whatever you guys think. So if I have to take it down, I'll take it down. If I have to take it down right now, I'll take it down tomorrow, if that's what you guys decide to do. But I think it would just, it would show the, all the stuff behind it.
That's totally up to the city administration. That doesn't have anything to do with what we are talking about here, or what this commission's here to do. So you have discussions with the city administration to figure out what's going on after the vote and after council votes, once you get a final answer.
Okay, thank you.
So. Are there any other questions, comments? Yes, Tim?
I just, Mr. Chairman, I'd say, I'd make a motion to close the public hearing.
I haven't seconded.
Moved and seconded. I'm gonna say, not gonna say so last. Chayton, no answer.
I'm sorry. Who motioned and seconded? I'm sorry.
John seconded. Moved and seconded. Clayton, please call the rule.
Evans, aye.
Matoskill.
Matoskill, aye.
Mead.
Mead, aye.
Stocking.
Stocking, aye.
Holloman.
Holloman, aye.
Moran.
Moran, aye.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for a sign variance from Section 11-12-6 to increase the maximum allowable sign area from, upon the West State Street facade from 40 to 55.23 square feet at 302 West State, subject to the findings of fact contained in the staff report.
Moran, second.
Moved and seconded. Chayton?
Just to clarify, this is to approve.
To approve.
We made the motion and the affirmative.
That's correct. Correct. Stocking.
Nay.
Holloman.
Nay.
Evans.
Evans, nay.
Moran.
Moran, nay.
Mead.
Mead, nay.
Matoskill.
Matoskill, nay.
The motion fails.
Okay. When this is, he goes to council? What's the schedule on that?
So this will go to city council on Tuesday, July 5. Typically, our meetings or their meetings are on Mondays. It's gonna be Tuesday, July 5, at 7:00 PM, in the city council chambers here.
All right. Thank you very much, sir. We appreciate you coming in and trying to resolve this situation.
Yep. I appreciate it, too. And, and it makes, it makes way more sense, after listening to what you guys talked about, than when I walked up down the street with the inspector. So I really appreciate it.
That's good. That's good. We appreciate that.
I feel, feel a little bit more confident with that, okay?
All right.
Thank you guys so much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
It's a shame. Okay, next item on the agenda is public comment. There isn't anybody online, and it's just if this gentleman wants to comment, so, to the commission. And so there isn't anything. So item seven is, other business. What's cooking?
All right. Let me pull up the development page real quick.
Dunkin' Donuts, tax sale, yeah.
So, we have the Fox Valley Commerce Center. We recently recommended city council approve the preliminary PUD and subdivision, the zoning map amendment. And now they're moving forward to the final phase. So they now have an application for final PUD and final subdivision and a site plan review. So those items will not require a public hearing, given that everything is in compliance with the preliminary plans. So they are working through comments with staff at this time.
But we will see a site plan review, but not in a public hearing format.
Correct.
Okay.
The Verizon Tower at Oscar Swan Project, recently, there was a balloon test that took place on May 24, I believe. We do have pictures. City staff took pictures. That is on the project webpage on the website, the city's website. And then recently, the applicant has provided updated plans for the tower. And they provided photo simulations of what the tower will look like based on pictures taken from the balloon test. So they were able to use their photos from the balloon test, and then actually Photoshop the tower in to get a better visual of what that would look like.
Okay.
So I encourage all the members to check that out.
Is that on the web now?
That is, yes. So also, a public hearing has been scheduled for this item on Thursday, June 23.
June 23?
Yes. Yeah, so yes, that would be our next meeting.
So that's Swedish days.
Oh, it is.
Yeah, it is.
Have a beer tent in here.
I'll walk over.
Yeah. Well, there's parking at the police station. So I'm thinking, like, where can we park? Okay.
Parking spots down here, right?
Yeah, I guess, yeah. That, there's, those should be, unless staff are using them to visit Swedish stays with their family.
Stay over, yeah.
And then we also have a variation that's been submitted for 1258 Meadows Road. Right now, the code only permits two driveway entrances per zoning lot. This property owner would like a third. So that's what the variation is. I think it, I, I believe that the city engineer can only approve up to two. So the, the variation would be to allow that third.
Interesting. It, it, I was there yesterday.
Yes. Yeah. So 1258 Meadows Road.
It's just north of Fargo, on Meadows.
Yes. And then we do have other projects that are coming in, that haven't been, that haven't made it to the website yet. But there's, we're starting to pick up a little bit. So lucky for us, we have our assistant planner that will be joining us on Monday, June 20. So-
That's the new position?
I'm sorry.
That's the new position?
Yes, the assistant planner. Yep. So, yeah, they'll be joining later in June. And we are happy to have them.
Great.
And I believe that is all I have for now. Thank you for everybody for filling out the EIS statements. I know that was a challenge.
After all the threatening letters they sent?
So-
When I never got the initial email.
Same here, same here.
You didn't either. I thought somehow I missed it. All right.
But regardless, regardless, thank you for filling that out. So.
So what do you know about Dunkin' Donuts? I just heard yesterday that it, the property sold for taxes.
We never got a single dollar out of it.
No, what? When did you hear?
I just heard that yesterday or the day before.
Just this week, yeah.
So I, I did tax sale work for 20 years. I'm a real estate tax attorney. So that doesn't mean they're in danger of losing the property. You have a minimum of two years after the taxes are sold to come in and redeem it with interest and penalties.
Okay.
But that's not a good sign.
Still crazy.
I understand, I understand the construction lender took it over, so they probably have now more leverage to-
Right.
-to get the borrower to comply with performing under the construction law.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not a good sign.
With $11,000 or something.
Tax buyers aren't gonna become the owner anytime soon.
Doesn't sound like there'll be donuts anytime soon.
No, no, that's-
That building be there for years before even open.
Right. But, but for the ingress egress with the IDOT, that was ready to go, correct, at this point?
So, yes. So they have received approval from IDOT, to my knowledge, to my limited knowledge, I will put it that way, because I, I have not been directly working with this project. I think this went through the entitlement phase through Planning and Zoning Commission before I got here.
Did?
Yeah.
But, to my knowledge, they have, they have obtained the permit from IDOT to-
Modify the two points?
Yes.
Okay.
Exactly.
Oh, that's good.
So-
At least that's done.
That is all I have to say about that.
But now there are, there are other challenges. Okay. Thank you, John. It wouldn't be a meeting without-
Without discussing-
And there's always something new.
Someday I may bring Dunkin' Donuts coffee for everybody.
The scary is, there's always something new. That's what I don't, like, how can there be more new? It's been years.
Right, right.
And I saw that in apartment projects, which was drawn?
Yes. So the cornerstone affordable housing project that was initially proposed at the southwest corner of Kirk Road and East State Street has been pulled. That's-
Is it dead, or just?
Um, I, I think, I, I believe they might still be interested in Geneva, but it just, that, that site was a bit challenging, and so they withdrew their application.
Do you think that site can work for lower density? Because that was, what, 350? 350 units? 250?
250.
Yeah. There, there are some challenges with that site, mainly with access. So it's just, you know, what, what is it zoned for? What do we think it can support? I think it, it involves many different entities working together. You have KDOT on Kirk Road, and then you have IDOT on East State Street, and then obviously the city.
Right.
So there could be some creative solutions, but that would involve some stakeholders all getting on board and going from there. But that's, that's a long way down the road. So all I can say, bit of a challenging site, and I think that, just have them reconsider the project for right now.
Okay. Well, thanks for the update.
I have a question. Did the, um-
Do, is there a mic? Maybe. I guess we are still.
Sorry. Did the agenda item that we looked at last time with the tattoo, did that go to city council? What was the outcome?
Yes, so I guess I could, I, I forgot about that. I apologize. So, yes, the tattoo shop tax amendment was approved.
Oh, God.
I think there's some work being done inside the space. Yeah, I saw it. Yeah, sorry. I saw a contractor in there driving by today. I saw him going in and out.
Oh, nice.
Yeah?
Good.
Yes.
All right. If nothing else?
Move to your chair.
Thank you, ma'am.